Citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As usual, residents are asked to sign in to speak during citizens' request. Speakers are allotted three minutes to present their initial comments. All meetings will be recorded auditorily and faceless. Roll conference, Mrs. Wood. Here. Mrs. DeHill?
Here.
Mr. Lahr?
I'm here.
Mr. McCallum?
Yes.
Mr. Nagy?
Mr. Zerowski?
Yep.
Mr. Gee?
Here.
Mayor Noah?
Here.
Mr. Furman?
Here.
And Mr. Russell.
Here.
All right. Okay, thank you. Before we begin the meeting, and I know there's a lot of questions about this, I'd like to ask the solicitor to give us a timeline of the history of the improvements of the pool project.
Okay. So, the pool project went out for bids in October 28th of 2021. On December 19th of this 2021, as replaced by council for a construction manager. The pool project bids were opened on January 11th of 2022. Bids were awarded by council on January 19th of 2022. And that's under four prime contractors. So you had a general contractor, which was Nellro Construction. You had electric contractor, which was Merritt Electrical, Inc. You had a plumbing contractor, which was First American Industry, Inc. You had a cannibal contractor, which was East West Manufacturing, like. They were awarded at the January 19th meeting. The contracts with the various contractors were signed on February 11th. In those contracts, the completion date of the pool was April 1st, 2023. So throughout all of those contracts. On February 16th, the city of our higher, Nacero CM Services as the construction manager. And on March 1st, 22, the project starts. So from the time the project met staff, provided regular updates to council, it was consistent with the contracts, every update up until December 1st of 22, and the date of the project completion date, based on the contractor's schedule, was April 1st, 2023. In December of 22, there was a movement in the schedule, and now again, staff was updating. Council, the project completion date was adjusted until April 17th, 2023. And that stayed the date until January 18th, 2023, when staff advised borough council, the completion date was adjusted until May 5th, 2023. And that became the date. On March 15th, 2023, staff advised borough council that the scheduled completion date would be adjusted until June 1st, 2023. June 1st was the expected completion date up until May 17th, 2023. And it was that time that for the first time, staff advised borough council that the scheduled completion date would actually be, it was actually adjusted until July 6th, 2023. As of right now, something came into this after. This is the, you know, the current, this is the current completion date of July 6th, 2023. Instead, if there's any statement or other information that the borough council knew that the scheduled date, completion date was something other than June 1st before May 17th, if that's not true. So the first time council knew that would be extended beyond June 1st, it would be May 17th.
Okay, thank you very much. How did I know that in April?
You know what? I, I think, I think we should all go on record and say what we knew. That's all right. You know, since you brought the subject up, I can say that I was corresponding with, I'm going to start on myself, a number of people. Walt, is Walt here? But Walt copied a number of people. And on April 27th, I was asked, he asked, is June 1st realistically going to be the opening day? And, and I, my answer was, as of April 25th, 2023, which was over the last time that I had asked. So it's two days before. The latest construction schedule shows June 1st completion date. And I did not know until the May 17th meeting that that June 4th, June 1st date was changed. And he, Walt coincidentally asked me on May 17th, is the June 1 opening of the water park realistic? And I didn't know until I got to the meeting that night. I wasn't able to attend the pre-meeting. So, you know, I, I would suggest that we all put on the record for the borough minutes, what we, what we knew. So up until May 17th, 2023, I did not know that the date was anything other than June 1st. What have I do?
That's the first that I had heard of. And I talk to Courtney a couple of times a week, and we discussed it. And up until May 17th, the official date was June 1st.
So I concur as well. That's the date we were given. We had no reason to believe that plus it would open after the date. So I was leading the talk to the person yesterday.
I was too, because I was informed with that, like, of the project manager.
I never knew either. It was, what they, it was June, which we were a little sad about, but building a $6 million pool. We had COVID to fight in the beginning. We had asking everybody, and that's why John, not on the council anymore, he had almost done their break time, asking everybody what they wanted. And it drove him crazy going through all the computer programs that they have out there that everybody talks about. And then what happened? We finally started. What was the date we started to date the hole? The hole was dug and cleared away. What was the date we really started to build? That's the big question.
But the question is, you know, did you know before the May 17th meeting that it was going to be anything other than June 1st?
No, I did not. And, and none of that made me happy, but that's what it is. When you're building this kind of a swimming pool, there are multiple layers. We started from dirt, 20, 30, 40 feet down. And it wasn't anybody that seemed to understand. And anybody that's in construction ought to know that it takes time to build. You're watching people, you've seen up at school springs where they're still not put the buildings up, and they've been working for almost, what, 10 months? The point is that people don't understand that they want it right away. You can't get things like that right away. If we didn't take the time, the energy, and the stamina to make sure this pool was put in right, have three different groups of people watching over this pool while it was being built and protecting the residents, I don't know why anybody has to make a stink about the whole thing.
Did you know?
June 1st is the date, not known to be the date until May 17th, when we had that discussion. The solicitor gave all the dates that I ever heard. I'd never heard anything like that.
I may ask, with all the information that's been provided so far, I've not heard anything answering the question, why? Now, I realize there's a lot of complexity in a project of this nature overall. But, you know, pushing it back, you know, particularly a month plus from the one June to the sixth July date, is there any wherefores and whys?
I, I think I'm going to refer that to the solicitor, because I'm very afraid anything I might say might become a problem and I lost it. So I will let him answer that if that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, it was a delay in the project and reasons, you know, where it's how our position is, the contractor didn't get that a lot of time. It's their delight that caused it. And, you know, these stamping cameras, all of those claims that will, you know, that'll be litigated over that. That causes, that's, that's where our position is as the borough. So what you're saying is some action is going to be taken with regard to the various firms in contracting, that they're not meeting, you know, specified dates or anything like that? Well, the dates, the construction's ongoing. It's, you understand, you know, when they might finish, that's one element, right? The work of the board, and that's going to get done. You know, how it checks out is to, the damages that are resolved in front of the delay, you know, leave it resolved with them. You know, everybody will resolve it completely, or it'll result in unethical resumption. So that basically says that.
How can you say your name after a record?
Okay, uh, my name is Harold Plusa, and I reside at 4647 Dover Delphi.
So how the purpose of, you know, comments is that there's, was a suggestion in the news media, the council knew it did not need to. And, you know, it didn't differentiate. So everybody's, you know, theoretically complicit. That's why I thought it was important that everybody say what they, what they knew. And I'm just going to say this, at the end of the report, it said, nobody from the borough got back to KDK TV about the pool problems by airtime. And I'm, I'm going to make sure that that never happens again. I'm, under our public information policy, I'm one of the spokespersons, the president of council, the borough manager, the police chief are all, you know, spokespersons for the borough. But I'm going to make sure that they have my cell phone number and that if we ever get into a situation like this again, where it's information that isn't true, what I heard into the news media, that it will be responded to.
I want to answer all questions I can, since I'm going to be leaving in January, which is fine with me. If you have enough time to this, all right. Did you all complain about the fire department moves being built? No.
No.
Or the police department?
No.
Nobody did. You're having a phenomenal swish swimming pool in this whole area. One person went out and made this borough look like a crap place. It's never been in that situation in all my years, 53 in the fire company. I sat up there for every meeting, because I was president. I don't understand, I guess it's my age. I don't understand what is so damned important about having the pool happening to be ready, so everybody's going to be so upset. Live your lives, it'll be built, it'll be there for 75 years. Are you all going to die because it's not made? I don't think differently, maybe because I'm old. The pool is a gift from this borough to the public, because you pay for it. But if you don't, if you want to have a piece of crap, yeah, we can hurry, or we can build something that Brentwood built, or Baldwin built, nothing wrong with that. But they're smaller. We wanted to give the borough many great things, because we've got good leaders in finance with Bob and others. But someone has always gotten on the computer and gone in all those same programs, ridiculed everything, called the, called the, the television stations. They didn't, they didn't put half of what he said on the station, because they knew it was illegal. And then insulted those people on the computer again. I think anybody that uses that computer to do that kind of work is one, not a woman and not a man. Confront, confront the people that you want to cut their throats. And that's what happened.
Okay, thank you, Phil, for your comments.
I just want to say one thing.
Now, I think I need to.
Please, I just want to say that I'm not complaining about the delay in the pool. I have this more out of a sense of curiosity as to what was transpired.
For citizens' requests? Yeah, I have it, please, because that's the next vote.
So, I don't think you've finished. What do you guys just say? The council was so rough, and he didn't get a chance to. Scott?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Scott. I asked.
The, I believe that you asked if we knew if the pool wasn't going to open on Memorial. As I recall.
June 1st.
June 1st. I believe, I think in the March executive session where we renewed the contract with Nacero, I believe I heard end of June, early July, maybe nobody else heard it, but I did. And that's why I made the statement.
You hear it.
Who made that statement?
Yeah, Scott. And are the, are the executive sessions recorded? Can't we just simply go back and auditorily listen to it? Because.
No, we don't need a big question.
You just put auditorily?
No, executive sessions aren't recorded.
I know.
Executive, executive sessions are not recorded because items of bribery, personnel, items of litigation, and a lot, minutes are kept. They're not recorded auditorily.
So if somebody fills out a raise no request about what happened in the executive session, do we want to know?
No. Wait, that's saying, you're saying, you're saying the month March. We have March, April, May, and the, our experts were telling us that it's going to happen. So, you know, whether there's a possibility, you know, anything can happen. You can have all kinds of bad weather, and anything can happen. But as of when I reported in April, it was June 1st. It was June 1st. It was never anything other than June 1st until our May 17th meeting.
Why do you have to know all this, son? Why is it so important for you to create hell and havoc in the community? It's never had that problem. You come on board, and you don't even care.
An email about stopping the sales of pool passes, that's why. This isn't about the pool being delayed, this is a $6, $7 million project.
The day, the day you said that.
It's a $6 million project.
The day you sent that email, the plan was already in place. It was being done that particular day. The day you sent that email, we should stop it, the plan was already in place, and so it is.
Okay, well, then we could have stopped it.
I, I think the point is, you just made a statement that somebody in executive session said the pool was going to be delayed. There were seven, at least seven of us here. Does anybody remember that?
No.
Anybody else remember that?
Never said.
I don't remember it.
Then how did I have, do I have a question?
I don't know. That's, that's the question.
We're actually, I knew it was going to be end of January, July. Okay.
Everybody in that executive.
Why did you?
Nobody remembers.
Why does that matter?
It doesn't matter. It was probably.
It's a damn big deal in Whitehall Borough, the damaged Whitehall Borough. Why would you come in to do what you did and your followers? Two people in your life have done this to you, and you just think it's fun to put everything out on the, on the computer system? That's untrue. Even KDK and Channel 11 would not even finish your comments, because they know they were wrong. And then you insulted both of them, and they came after you.
You can actually do a really nice article about me following that.
Okay. Have a chance to have comments, I think it is done, to stick to the agenda. And the next plug in the agenda is for citizens' requests. And Mr. Thomas, you're up first.
Question, should I speak now or work on your agenda?
Yeah. You can talk.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. My name is David Thomas, 4984, Weeden Drive. Here representing Whitehall Borough Historical Society. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I mean, you have an agenda item later on coming up regarding our license for small game of chance. But I want to speak first about what we've done here for, also trustee mine, myself, and I know members of the few. We want to thank you for the past support. Because of that support, we had displayed during the month of January, library very well received. We also celebrated Borough's 75th anniversary, maybe your attendance in that event. We held it on January 5th. There was, there were no effete presentation about the boroughs of borough. Assistant Chief Gable discussing industry of the police department did a very good job. Skip Brown represented the fire department, spoke about the startup of that fine organization. Our chairman was still interested in citizens, since then we had Dr. Joe Ritzold, who's also another trustee of the, of the society, speak on the Pittsburgh Members of World War II. Very well received, we had the honor of having two, four or two veterans with us. They're each 103 years old. One of his brother's girlfriend was.
I didn't know that.
He made a point real clear. He was very smart.
I told my wife about that, I said, that's my girlfriend, 103 years old. And then subsequently, we had a, in April, the Mercsfolk began into a very large luncheon, getting over to the meeting room. Thank Hannah for helping that, that event. This coming July, we have Dr. Robert Olson, who's a president of Merritt's Tilt on college, speaking about bad proficient on the street, and that's, I'm very much looking forward to that. We're going to have our annual meeting this coming October. Working on a speaker towards that. We hopefully have a lot of unattended support for it. We have currently over 60 members of the society, who are helping grow that number even further. We have a website.
You can yield to how?
Don't make it 103. We have a website up and, up and running, and it's very well received also. You can hear the mayor's and Skip Brown's talk on that, and even other lecturers on, put onto that also. Our auction of the street signs, I very much appreciate giving you all street signs, instead of wash your hands. And we sold over $5,000 worth already.
Wow.
So some people get them already from the library, thanks library for that. Others will be available at, depending day, we don't know.
How much per sign was that?
It started at $25, $75 bill, no math to get it. And the most, I would say, easily 90% of the streets have more than one sign. See the opportunity, but they're all in real good condition, so try to get, get there first and foremost. We very much appreciate giving us authorization to get the smallest game of chance license. Pick up a couple of dollars here and there, Chinese auction, 50/50, if you want to do it right. And we appreciate the opportunity to continue to raise funds in that way. And I think we're all.
And so make sure that we're all. But I will, I will contact you if you give me your name and number after the meeting, and we'll see what we can find out about this.
They, they, I did talk to a police officer last night. And he said, try to get licensed by November. Hold up in advance.
No, I, I understand that. We don't want to put you in harm's way or anything. And just letting everybody know that our phone answer is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Call us, report it to us, and we will, we will investigate.
And I, I can attest that that works, because my daughter had a concern on her street. Four houses up, we notified the police, and it turns out the guy was making bombs. Wow. So you have to let the police know, it's very important.
That's right.
Okay, next, we have Jane Cassiato.
Yeah.
Jane Cassiato, 5348 High Grove Road. I'm just here to say that I, we've lived in Whitehall for over 30 years. We own our house, we pay our taxes, we pay a property tax, we actually pay property tax. And I just want to say that all this trash talk that's going on about the pool is a sad, sad, sad situation for Whitehall. The more you talk about the negativity of your pool, the more, you might as well just say your house is worth trash. Because what you're doing is you're drawing down the value of the community. And you pull down the community, you have no community pride. And what you do is you're dragging this community down for anybody who's, who's looking at us facing outward. I don't want Whitehall to turn into this community, and I can see that it's going to happen. And it's going to get a lot worse before it gets better. This disinformation campaign has got to end. This trash talk on social media has got to end. And if you can't be proud of Whitehall, you're nothing but a jagoff. That's all I got to say.
Thanks all of you for your, all of you for your comments, they're always appreciated. We'll move on now to bills and payroll, the mundane part of the meeting. Mrs. Wood?
Ladies and gentlemen, administrative services, Mr. Nagy.
In order.
Planning and zoning, Mr. Gee.
In order.
Public safety, Mr. McCallum.
That's in order.
Public works, Mr. Walker.
That's in order.
Recreation, Mr. Wood.
In order.
Sewer fund, Mr. Lahr.
In order.
Sanitary sewer fund, Mr. Lahr.
That's in order as well.
Construction fund, Mr. Nagy. And capital projects fund, Mr. Nagy. I ask for a motion to approve bills on the bill list dated June 7th, sorry, June 7th, 2023, from the general fund totaling $222,395.20 from the sewer fund totaling $25,753.50 from the sanitary sewer fund totaling $120,033.60 from the construction fund totaling $455,860.21 and from the capital projects fund totaling $163.46.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I also ask for a motion to approve general fund trucks and tractors in the amount of $108,398.19 and from the payroll fund should be ratified at the amount of $104,991.60 for grand total ratification, $205,794.79.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Moving on, I ask for a motion to approve my general fund payday, payroll for the payday of May 19th, 2023, in the amount of $162,994.62.
So moved.
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
There is an overtime list attached to that. And then I also ask for a motion to approve payroll for payday June 2nd, 2023, in the amount of $166,865.20.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the May 17th meeting.
If there's some corrections, I make motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from May 17th. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Mayor, you're on.
First item I have is the monthly report for the month of May. EMS assists 166. Court during pre-trial 114. Accident 16, criminal arrest 18. Traffic stops 174. Traffic details 96. Traffic violations citations 89. And traffic violations warnings 116. The statistics are comparable to 2022, except in the area of traffic. It was a little more in traffic enforcement this time period of 2023 than it was in 2022. Motor monies collected turned over to the borough during May 2023 totaled $2,806.36. Moving along, police department continues to work on traffic issues within the borough. So officers completed a daily traffic detail at Mother Mercy Academy to relieve traffic congestion on Windbale and Baptist Road during this festival. They adjusted the green light cycle at Brownsville Baptist and Provost intersection to allow more vehicles to pass through the intersection, flash out, backs up every day.
And it's, it's actually, it's been increased because of Provost Road project?
It was. Provost down the cast.
Repaired the traffic signal loop sensor at the Baptist Doverdale Wayman Road intersection to relieve. Completed the mid-block crosswalk on Wayman Road, the Francis Lane, and Wayman Plaza. And requested Columbia Gas to install larger road clothes and detour signs for motorists traveling north on Provost Road towards 451. Police training activities Sergeant Hinkle and Officer Loftz better completed their annual mobile field force training with the Sheikah Support Team on May 19th. Chief Gregor completed public information officer training at the Elegante County Emergency Services on May 22nd and May 24th. Chief, that would be in your capacity as our emergency management coordinator, as opposed to as a police chief.
Yes, I've, I've already taken public information training as, as a police chief. This is one of the required classes for me to finish my professional level certificate for emergency management. I've got one more left.
And then investigator Newbold and juvenile officer Smith attended a forensic interview workshop on June 1st for crimes committed against children. We have some candidates, if you'll recall, the Extraordinary AIDS Awards. We recognize a couple of Whitehall residents who performed CPR and saved their neighbors' lives. Well, I'm going to read this one. These are our next candidates, and we arranged to have them come to the next meeting. So on June 4th, Whitehall Police Fire responded to an early morning structured fire on Ballman. It was reported that the homeowner was trapped on a rear porch engulfed in flames. The next door neighbor Jacqueline Sala and Shane Grossick were outside and immediately called for help. Grossick went to the porch to help the trapped resident, Kelly Vitale. He convinced her to jump from the porch and help break her fall. The on-scene police and fire personnel believe these residents truly. The on-scene police and fire personnel believe these residents truly saved Kelly's life as well as her son Alex, who was still inside the residence when first responders arrived. And Chief would like to recognize them at the next meeting. Kudos to these Whitehall residents who responded and helped their neighbor. All right, moving along. Dorothy T. Saxhauer Day on May twenty-eighth went very well. She had a family in from the Georgia area. She's going to go to Georgia. I'll tell you what, imagine this, okay? She's a hundred years old and she's lived in Pittsburgh all her life. And now she's going to go to Georgia. And it's so matter-of-fact. It's like, okay, well, I'm going to do my next hundred years in Georgia. I'm going to do my next hundred years in Georgia. She is such a wonderful, classy, beautiful woman. Sorry to lose her as a Whitehall, Whitehall resident. She lived in Whitehall Borough for fifty-seven years. And if you're a Brentwood resident, she married Dr. John Saxhauer, which I think a lot of Brentwood residents knew him. And she, she married later on in life. His wife was deceased and she had never been married. And so she married into a family. But it was, it was a great, a great celebration that day. And as I'm giving the presentation to the table to my left was Dick McDonald, who is, he will be a hundred-and-one in November, and he is.
Well, you're trying to fix him up.
He is. Well, he just lost his chance. So, but after hearing about the, where is the girlfriend of the hundred-three-year-old veteran now? There's hope for all of us. So, okay. Memorial Day. Linda does a phenomenal job. It was packed. A lot of people. We got to give Linda Book a lot of credit. I enjoyed this Memorial Day as much as any that I, you know, went to. She added Dr. Rischel, and he had some interesting stories to tell. And so it was, it was great. It was packed. Like I said, packed room and music and everything, which was, thank you.
My pleasure.
Great job. I received a block party request. Get ready, chief. It's, it's coming up. Two, two weekends in June. I think, I, I thought it was the seventeenth, but I just figured out the seventeenth is the year of the.
June seventh.
What's the sorry?
It's June seventeenth. Okay, sorry. I can never do math in public. It's what's in the. Teal drive, teal drive. It's a, it's a call system, so it won't be a problem at all. And I explain what the process is and he's going to take care of it. Okay, so two more things. One is, as Dave explained, the Whitehall Borough Historical Society would like to be able at the membership meeting, not, you know, not at any other time. We're not looking to, we're grateful to council for the, the street signs and they reported, you know, what a great idea that was and, you know, for raising funds. And we, you know, we're, we're going to invest in, in history and Whitehall. You're going to see some great programs. But at any rate, in order to, and this is strange, Kathy and I were talking about this today. Kathy asked me, why, why would we need to do this? And I know there's something, isn't it, or that in the small games of chance law, that if you are in a municipality, that you have to get, have to be recognized as a civic organization. So all the council, they're not endorsing the, you know, the fundraising, they're not doing anything. All they're doing is saying, I hope you can say this, that the Whitehall Borough Historical Society is a civic organization. If you can't say it, you're going to get a lot of clues from the audience. But at any rate, so I would like a, a motion to approve, I guess you have to, a motion to read the Small Games of Chance resolution.
Someone needs to make that motion.
Yeah, somebody needs to make that.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Before we read.
You've gone opposed.
Yes, I did. Thank you. Opposed. I, I do have a question. Does that make, declaring some organization a civic organization, does that obligate the borough in any way?
No, it's a statutory term, so they have to submit a certain amount of information. You have to establish the criteria. They've done that. But it's not, it is, you're giving that a civic organization for the purpose of the Small Games of Chance license.
That's an obligation.
It doesn't go beyond that, it's strictly with that statutory purpose. And just as a member of the friends of the library that has already done that, they do the Small Games of Chance. Same principle there.
May I, may I express my, no. I remember we had a lot of that happening and a lot of things for our recreation before. We had that, the Small Game of Chance. It got into a problem. I can remember, can't remember much about the problem. And that's why my argument always was that the borough needs to put the funds for organizations like yours and hers at that time, put it into the budget. We need money. Then they can supply money to you as long as there's a good reason and under control. That's the only reason I voted no. If, if, if everybody really likes that kind of a program, our, our past is. But I, I think the borough should be responsible and help you, the people of the community, for what you're giving them. And it should be that way because of the general fund.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I made the motion.
The base resolution, yeah.
I was ready.
So I'll read it with entirety. The resolution of Whitehall Borough Council, County of Allegheny and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recognizing Whitehall Borough Historical Society as a civic and civic service association under the local options small game of chance act of the month. Whereas the Whitehall Borough Historical Society maintains its principal place of business and conducts its principal activities in the borough of Whitehall. And whereas the applicant desires to operate certain small games of chance and/or conduct raffles to generate funds to finance its operation and further its purpose. And whereas under the local options small game of chance act as amended, the applicant must procure a license from the treasurer of the County of Allegheny County before doing so. And whereas the act provides that any nonprofit organization not affiliated with a national or state association must procure a resolution from the governing body of the municipality in which the association conducts its principal activities, affirming its status as a civic and or service association within the comprehension of the act. And whereas the solicitor of the borough has requested, received and reviewed appropriate documentation from the applicant. And whereas said documentation has verified the existence of the applicant as a nonprofit corporation, authorized rights, articles of incorporation and/or bylaws to engage its civic or service purposes within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas the solicitor of the borough has advised the Whitehall Borough Council thereof that the applicant is an organization which may be recognized by a resolution of said Whitehall Borough Council as a civic and or service association is contemplated by the act. Now therefore, we get resolved with the Whitehall Borough Council of the, and it is hereby resolved by the, with the authority of the same association. First, the recommendations set for the period are incorporated by reference to their two. Second, the Whitehall Borough Council recognizes the applicant as a nonprofit corporation, which is authorized by its written articles of incorporation and bylaws to engage its civic and service purpose within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which has existed in the Commonwealth for more than one year. Third, the Whitehall Borough Council by the adoption of this resolution recognizes the applicant as a both civic and or service association within the context of the local options small game of chance act as amended. Fourth, that any resolution or part of a resolution can be put in with the terms and provisions of this resolution be and the same is hereby repealed to the extent of said conflict.
Make the motion the resolution number.
Ten-seventeen.
He's got.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Buck.
Yes.
Mrs. The View.
Yes.
Mr. Law.
No.
Mr. McAllen.
Yes.
Mr. Nagy.
Yes.
Mr. Silverus.
Yes.
Mr. B.
Yes.
So she carries.
Thank you.
Good. The last item I have is just to follow up on the, something that Chief said about, you know, contacting us. Just to show you how, how things can get mixed up, okay? So, so I get an email from a resident who saw something on social media that another resident was complaining about the filling of cracks in the street. And I couldn't recognize from the picture what the street was. So I sent it to Courtney and I said, Courtney, what's going on here? Because they were, the headline was Whitehall Tax Dollar is Wasted. And so Courtney quickly recognized how she recognized the street. I don't know, but she recognized the street. She said, Mayor, that's Baptist Road. And Baptist Road is a state. So it was actually being filled by state personnel, not Whitehall personnel. Then what happened was, and this is interesting, and I, it just goes to show you that you need to, you know, call or contact. So I get another email from a person who says, let's see, it just says FYI. And it happened to be Mike Harical, who is the mayor of Whitehall Township. And apparently, the, you know, must have Googled, you know, Whitehall mayor and said, also, all the taxpayers' money into fixing Baptist and look at the cracks. They didn't fill any of them. They just spayed it, sprayed it to make it look like it, the work. I'm not exaggerating, it's really bad. And Mike writes back to me, FYI. And so Mike Harical, who I know real well, he's on the board of the executive board of the Pennsylvania State Mayors. So it's, you know, it just shows you that you need to, to call the borough, find out, you know, get the, get the information and then, and then you'll know. That's all I have.
Can I make one more comment before we move on? In regards to the devices at the Seven-Eleven, they are permitted by ordinance. They're not slot machines. They're not games of chance. They're called games of skill. We did try to keep them out of the borough, and I think I could refer to the solicitor to maybe explain.
Well, unfortunately, court decisions have come down on those particular machines and have determined that they are games of, games of skill, not games of chance. Games of skill are, are legal. You know, the district attorney's office goes the same way on those things. It's all about, it was a decision, I want to say, out of a, of an outlying county that ended up becoming binding. So that's, that's where, that's why the legal.
But we, we did try to keep them out. Unfortunately, we put, we set up very strict standards where they could go. They're only in a few parts of the, of the borough. They're inspected quarterly. We have an officer that goes around and checks all the mechanical device licenses and establishes to make sure somebody didn't bring in something new that we're not aware of. And I mean, if they do, they have to pay the permit or it has to go. Or if it doesn't meet the perimeters of the ordinance, it goes. They get cited and the person who brought them gets cited. I'm done.
I'll move on to our solicitors.
Thank you. I don't have a report this evening, but I would ask for an executive session on two items.
Thank you. Our engineer, Mr. Best.
Thank you, Madam President. This is all from our report dated June second. Under the Phase Two Stormwater MS Four, Section Item One. As mentioned earlier, the PW Trench Separation Project has been completed. Rotorouder submitted their first pay application. So recommended motion is to approve Pay Application One in the amount of thirty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents for the PW Trench Separation Project, the Rotorouder Service Company.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Under Section Two, a lot occurred under the operation and maintenance plan. Under the twenty-twenty-two CCTV inspection contract, Rotorouder Services did submit their fourth pay application. We reviewed it, it's in order. So the recommended motion is to approve Pay Application Four in the amount of forty-thousand-fifty-three dollars and thirty-six cents for the Whitehall Borough Twenty-Twenty-Two CCTV Inspection Project, the Rotorouder Service Company.
So first, this is sorry. So moved. So I'll get it out. We'll look.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And on the same lines, under the twenty-twenty-two sanitary sewer excavation repair contract, again, Rotorouder made a seventh pay application. We reviewed that and it's in order. Recommended motion is to approve Pay Application Seven in the amount of twenty-five-thousand-eighty dollars and no cents for the Twenty-Twenty-Two Whitehall Borough Sanitary Sewer Excavation Repair Contract to Rotorouder Service Company.
So moved. Any questions? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Under the twenty-twenty-two spot lining contract, this is a little housekeeping. Sorry. State Pipe Services Incorporated returned or submitted finally a signed application for work completed in March of this year. We reviewed that, it's in order. The recommended motion is to approve Pay Application One in the amount of eighty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-one dollars and no cents for the Twenty-Twenty-Two Whitehall Borough Sewer Spot Lining Contract, State Pipe Services.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay. And then on the twenty-twenty-two capital lining program, Insight Pipe Contracting did provide the remaining video work for internal televising of the spotliners that were complete. They submitted their Pay Application Two along with their bonding documents. It's always in order. Recommended motion is to approve Pay Application Two and final in the amount of forty-four-thousand-two-hundred-fifty-nine dollars and four cents for the Whitehall Borough Twenty-Twenty-Two Manhole and Manhole Line Program to Insight Pipe Contracting, LFC.
So moved. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
So you just explained the maybe of these twenty-twenty contracts. Yes, the contracts are typically placed for bid mid-year. So we're preparing twenty-twenty-three repair contracts currently. It'll be advertised, once all the paperwork and so on, the bid process occurs. Work starts late fall. A lot of times it is completed during that calendar year. It extends over into fall. And, and just earlier, for the final closeout, the spot lining network was completed in November of last year. They just provided the video tape. They would verify that the work that they did was completed. And it's all internal, it's all blow ground. Thank you. Under Item Four, Overlook Park, we have revised the, the plans as previously discussed. Took recommendations from the Parks Committee. The stairs will be, will be reconstructed as part of the project. As well as the playground will be reconstructed, sidewalks, so on. The existing concession building will be demolished and replaced with light-kind concession story, or concession building, but only be one store. So the way that the, the way we have the current project set up at the moment is the base bid would include the concession restroom area, the sidewalks, the parking, or not the parking, but the playground. That there's going to be damage to the parking because there's going to be stormwater management, underground tanks installed in that parking area. And then we would consider, like the council would consider, alternate bids, one of which is for a, two standalone buildings as well as, as the surfacing for the playground. Instead of having a loose rubberized material, it would be a poured-in-place rubberizing material. But we have suggested bid dates in the report. And we're looking to have an add to the borough on June twenty-first. That would be publicized on the June twenty-ninth. Pre-qualifications would be due to the manager July thirteenth. Notices of pre-qualifications would be July twentieth. Pre-bid meeting would be held July twenty-second, twenty-sixth, I'm sorry. A bid opening would be August the ninth. For the earliest council award would be August sixteenth. So we would like to have permission to advertise the Phase One of the Overlook Park. Prove that project.
So moved. Before we, hold up a second. Just to clarify, this is only refers to the one set of steps, correct?
Correct.
Doing both steps. Doing both steps, both sets was what got us into the 180,000.
Correct.
We have a, someone, I don't like to do that, but really that asked a quick question. Give your name and address.
Lacy Thomas, 4708 Baldwin Manor Road. From the original plan that the bid was very, it was out of scope, right, for what we could afford, what are we stepping back from? What did we scale back? Other than the, the double set of steps that we're talking, what else is scaled back and not included in this?
Absolutely. Improvements to the existing baseball field. So that would be the infield, um, regrading, the outfield regrading, infield drainage, backstop fencing, the set of steps going to Spring Valley. The concession stand, the size was reduced from essentially, I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, dimensions, but it contained four family restrooms, opposing as two family restrooms.
Thank you.
Should be Scotty, yeah, Womby Trail, one of the two.
That's exactly right. There was a logging trail around the perimeter, it was not to be reconstructed. But keep in mind, there was only one bid submitted or only one bid received, so. At either way, it's still way.
And it's not that those things are totally forbidden, simply to try to get it down to scale, but we can accomplish it this year, because that's when we have the funds to spend. It's complicated.
All right, I'll make a motion for the engineer to proceed with the advertising for this, Phase 1 of the Overlook Park project.
It's been moved in second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Under Item 12, the pool construction. DeMarco finished all the concrete flat work within the pool facility. They started demoing the concrete block along the, I call it the library parking lot. That's going to be changed for ADA accessibility. So that work started today. Landscaping, as of last check with the subcontractor, is to start next week. Start the process of starting the landscaping. Punch list to the building, potentially could, to the buildings could potentially start next week. There are cove tiles to be installed. I understand that they are on site and have to be installed. And obviously, the line work has been ongoing since last Thursday. So we're taking advantage of the weather as best as we can. Under Item 14, the 2023 Pavement Maintenance Program, just to make counsel aware, we will have a, or a pre-construction meeting was scheduled with the contractor, and it's on current Wednesday. If there are any questions?
I have very few questions for the board. Will I manage this report?
Thank you, Madam President. Because the two items listed, the first item, the report is in regards to a cyber liability policy that had been discussed previously at budget time. I was finally able to get two policies, there was separate policies for the administration level and for the police department, which both received a total of $7,415. There is $8,000 funded for this item, so I recommend that council approve the books. Agreed, it is $1 million on both of them.
Please move on second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
And then recently, the borough has, the Garland company came and completed a warranty inspection on both of the borough roofs. The roof outside is off here, the, the police roof, that was recently installed in 2020 and is in great condition. However, the main building roof is approaching the end of its useful life. It was installed in 1995. There are two years left on the current warranty. There is some minor maintenance that the public works is going to look at performing, but I want to put it on council's radar that that is going to be slated for replacement within the next five-ish years. The current quote received is between $600 and $750,000. Putting that information out there now.
Under the warranties, repairs, and what to take now to help us extend it?
There is stuff that they can do. I talked at length with Representative Garland and his professional team that it wasn't worth the money, that there is stuff that public works could do that would, you know, despite of sufficient. And with that being said, you could book that quote at a couple thousand dollars, but you're also going to be looking at this kind of number within the next five years. My recommendation is to, to wait. We haven't had any, had any leaks, it is still fine, but just putting on notice that the warranty itself will end in two years. It doesn't mean we need a roof in two years, but something to think about. And that is all that I have.
Any questions on this report? Community reports, recreation report. Thank you, Madam President. Let's introduce our recreation director, Hannah Balla.
Hello, everyone. Um, on May 30th, summer camp staff welcomed the majority of the pool staff to our summer camp orientation. I'm happy to announce that we're only losing one pool staff. Management has no concerns about being able to cover this loss. We have an eager and committed team for when the pool opens. I'm overjoyed to also announce that the new community day sponsorship structure allowed us to double the number of sponsorships and participation, and we're still accepting more. A couple upcoming events. We have an event with the library on Friday. It's a teddy bear picnic where the kids are able to bring their own stuffed friends. They'll have crafts and activities, and they do get lunch as well. Our next concert is June 16th at Brennan Plaza. On that Friday, we'll have food trucks, and our performer is actually flying in from Nashville because he got a, um, what do you say? Contract with Nashville. And he reached out to us before he left because I am family friends with him. So he's flying in from Nashville on Friday and flying out on Friday night to go back to play a show on Saturday. So if you can come, that's going to be a very good one. And then lastly, summer camp will begin on June 19th. Non-resident spots are almost sold out, netting the borough over $9,000, which will help offset costs for some. Any questions?
Yeah, I heard Paul Rennie's concert was good.
It was really good. That was at Snyder. And I think families did love having the spaces where the kids could play. It just not be, obviously Brennan Plaza is beautiful. It also has that beautiful stage with the bleachers, so we are going to keep it at Brennan Plaza. But it was a really good concert at Snyder.
Do you have a question?
No, I wanted to thank you when I called about the pickleball net being destroyed. You said, oh, you look into it. We took a day.
I got an email, I got an email at eight, I was up at Snyder at 15. I'll take care of it. Any other questions?
Well, maybe I'll mention this.
Oh, yes.
Everybody, anybody else get this letter?
No, here, so.
All right, so a resident of Whitehall has asked that we look into our policy on grandchildren. Apparently, he would like to bring, he and his wife would like to bring their grandchildren, but they don't reside with them full-time. Right, to the pool, I'm sorry. And so he was wondering, or he says, how do you prove that grandchildren reside with you full-time? So I, I want to pass along his, it's Marty Joyce of 4A15 Roberta Drive. If you.
He stopped at our meeting, our recreation meeting.
So he's asking, rethink whether we want to only require grandchildren that reside with the grandparents. You know, given today that a lot of grandparents are babysitting, you know, for their kids, their grandkids starting the summer, you know, do we, how strictly do we want to do? So I'm, Marty, Marty's not here. So what is work on this trench?
Reiterating that same question that raised to me, a number of different members, different family members. So they're watching grandkids, they visit a different area, and would they afford the occupancy? So it's not just one person. Are you looking at, are you looking at the rule?
Right now, when we originally spoke, council made the decision not to do it for this season. That way I can see what the analytics are, how many people are in the pool in that area, because this would open up the, you allowing technically non-residents to attend the pool. So with our new system, everybody's scanned in, no matter if it's physical pass or an e-pass. So I can see how many people are coming in, what time they're coming in, who's leaving at a certain time, so that we know that we're not over capacity with the Whitehall residents, and that next year we can look into having that favorite sitter.
And I, I think that is a good idea. Let's peel it out for a year before, because everyone has changes they want to make. I'm sure I can come up with something I want to change. I want my certain chair and a certain spot, but let's try it for a year at least and see before we come up, start changing everything, because we really don't know what's going to happen. So I think it is a good idea to stay.
Anything else?
I think this will pass on. Yes, I have three motions here to bring up to council, and the first is, which we've tabled, we've set the plans already, to authorize Public Works to relocate five trees to the perimeter of Frankland.
Can I ask, did anybody get my email? Okay, so I sent an email to members of the council. Mr. Navy was the only one that got back and said, maybe some of your capital. Governor say, members of council, as you may know from the agenda that we don't be a motion to authorize Public Works to relocate five trees to the perimeter of Fortured Heights Park, for all of the reasons detailed below, and I sent you this email before, I would respectfully ask you to vote no on this motion or not make the motion in the first place and die. Please do not introduce organized sports into a park that was specifically designed for passive purposes in consultation with the sports associations who were in agreement. There are other venues for this organized sport in islands and Snyder parks that are currently under discussion in the Parks Committee. Stone, you were one who proposed something like this, Snyder. So there are discussions about other parks. It's completely unnecessary to do this to the, to Fortured Heights Park.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, did you receive this other email today? They, they've changed their request to look at, just moving two trees by the playground area to open that up for them, and I didn't know if you had received it.
I, I did, but it's just the whole idea, the organized sports, and that, you know, we, there are other places where this can happen, and they're free to go up there and kick around the ball, right?
That's what they want to do anyway. They can't really use that as a structure.
Yeah, so, so, you know, yeah, let them, let them kick, kick in other places.
As I said last, as I said last time, it's a family park that was designed that way when I was on the committee. There's some things you need to finalize up there. It should not have any sports in it. I'm not against the kids and having all these things. I think it's great to have all these sports things, but sometimes you run out of space, you run out of time to put them in. You gotta then learn to go to the school with, with ideas that you're not going to have to charge us, or go over to Baldwin through the organization. So anyway, you can do, you can take every space. Next thing you know, we're going to want to put one in the middle of the street.
You know, you reminded me of something that Bill B., I would mention the last time, which is Wesley. Right, you know, has, has their field.
There's other options.
Sure are. They have a motion that.
No. So it dies.
Okay. Next is to adopt the pool disciplinary policy for the swimming pools. I need to read this, obviously. So I will make a motion to adopt the pool disciplinary policy for the swimming pools.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
Yeah, the only question again, what's the difference between the earlier one we had?
Um, the solicitor reviewed, had some comments on the, at the bottom there, the disciplinary action and the ability to appeal.
Write that on review, you know, someone's.
I'm not legal people.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Okay, thank you. And the third last, to amend the lap lane swimming times and adopt the lap lane reservation And there's a motion and a second. I, I have a question, again, going back to why are we changing things before we know?
This is not the policy we had listed. Did we not have the, it's not three available from 12 to 1, 12 to 12, 12 to 1?
This was, the proposal is to change it from 12 to 1.
No, to 12 to 1, extending it to next hour.
Yes.
We had that place.
No, no. It was from 12 to 12:30. When we, the old policy was from 12 to 12:30 and had nothing about reservations.
So this is just extending it by half hours, so it'll be a full hour for lap lane swimming. And then in council, we should consider a lap lane reservation option. It can be done either in person or online.
Well, Bill, I think it was at one of the couple meetings we had, the people were questioning that, and I think that's what they were hoping to get, is to change, right?
Is there, are we going to explore adult swim for, that's going to be left out?
Hannah did do some research with surrounding pools. Currently Brentwood Borough is the only pool to offer adult swim. Now that, if that's something council is interested in, we can obviously, we could have had a separate motion to agenda to clear that. This proposal before you strictly about the lap lane swimming.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on the lap lane swimming. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, opposed. A motion does pass.
That's all I have.
Anything else or recreation? Okay, administrative services.
No report.
Quickly, the lawn and planning and zoning, Mr. B.
No report. I do have a meeting on Wednesday, so I will report in a few minutes.
That does happen. Is that the same program you have, Stan?
It's the same. I'm having to report.
Library hasn't met since the last meeting. Okay, public works, relax.
I have one here. Public Works crews are delivering the last salt loaders for 2023 winter season. Funding in the next year will be lowered slightly because the salt pile is sufficient to start the season. The zoo front loader has been incredibly helpful in managing the salt pile. Also, Baldwin Borough reached out about the borough's new street signs and is interested in following Whitehall's lead. We can, you recognize we build $1 million salt then to save a lot of money over the years, and that's why we hope the rest of the salt we can store instead of paying all the extra fees. That's it.
Any questions on public works, on public safety?
Thank you. Just so for public disclosure myself, President Council and Chief Police, we met with the, the folks at Commonwealth Management Management and the actuarial people on there on this one too. So we had our quarterly meeting relating to the pension plans in the borough for the uniform and non-uniform personnel. The next step will be, come here in the next month or so, start doing the actuarial studies required every odd year, and they will be providing us with MMOs. In the past, we talked about what rates they might be utilizing for their actuarial work, and I believe it was, what, six and a half or six and three quarters? Okay. It used to be higher, the cost of money used to be higher in the past. So once, once we get those MMOs, we'll start to figure out what we, what we need to do from there. As I explained before, not funding these MMOs, well, they're actually required by law, but not funding those puts us in behind the eight ball in regards of what money we could go, and this grows exponentially. It just is, I'm just, so we're staying on top of that, and we'll get some more information back once we get that from the actuarials.
Would you explain to the public?
I don't even know. Minimum required.
Minimum, minimum, minimum.
Ovation, that's it, yeah. So what it does is every 10 years, the, the actuarial is committed, they, they do an analysis and study of the assets and our pension plans and what's projected to be utilized, of what areas they might have, and they come up with a liability, where they do defined pension plans. These are defined, they're not just regular. So, and with that, they tell us how much we got to fund each year to keep the fund solvent and pay its obligations to the retired folks of the police and the long uniform, which would see everybody else.
And we are fully funded.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. B. So, okay, moving on. The chief. The chief has done some investigation and he's requesting that we consider charging, under the right to know requests and the various different things that under Act, uh, Pennsylvania Act one thirty-four and Pennsylvania Act twenty-two, uh, we're looking to, and we are allowed to charge some fees, and we're looking to recoup some of the investment that we put into our, our police department with some of the software assistance that they have in place. So the chief is requesting council consider us charging a hundred and twenty-five dollars for police report requests pursuant to Pennsylvania Act one thirty-four and two hundred and fifty dollars for police video footage requests pursuant to Pennsylvania Act twenty-two. So the motion would be to authorize the borough solicitor to draft a document to see if she's scheduled to burn. Chief, do you have any other comment on that one?
Basically, Act one thirty-four allows a crime victim or their legal representative to get a redacted copy of a police report that is normally screened, screened from the right to know request and public knowledge to file a verified civil action. Because of the amount of work and time that goes into the police department, because I have to sit there and do everything to make sure that all the criminal justice information is redacted, I can't release any personal protected information, I can't release any information that reveals tactics or internal procedures of the police department, a hundred and twenty-five dollars is a reasonable fee to charge for that request, as long as they meet the criteria and we're able to actually release some of the police report so they can do their civil action. Act twenty-two covers the in-car camera, uh, video. It covers the body worn camera video that's captured. That's not a part of the right to know request. That's actually a very labor intensive process. There's like five or six different categories. It'd have to be medical, we could even consider releasing it. Um, if it is released, it's a very redacted copy of it, especially with the body worn camera. We might be in some, inside somebody's home, a personal space, we have, you know, conversations, juvenile information, you have to have permission of everybody that's on the recording to do this. We just made an investment of six thousand dollars for the software to be able to redact videos, those are two thousand dollars for the computer. So again, two hundred and fifty dollars per request. If, it's only if we're able to give them a copy, I think is reasonable, um, concerning the amount of work and, and investment that has to go into it. And these are all kind of comparable to what other agencies are doing within Allegheny County. I know one was on the very high end of the six hundred dollars per request for police video. Two fifty seems to be what the average is at this time.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize a solicitor to draft a document.
Senator, it's been moved and seconded. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, and also we have another request from the chief, and what's happening here is, is, you know, we had some, a resident requesting speed bumps by the school of, what did I say, Whitehall, Ohio, is it not Whitehall, Illinois? Okay.
It was actually all five.
All five?
Yes.
Well, and, and what people don't understand is there are certain state requirements and tests and things that we have to consider. So what we're trying to do now is we've come up with an approach that we think will help because we'd like the chief, chief to like permission to work with the solicitor to develop a traffic, a draft traffic calming policy presented to council for review. Several other communities in the South Hills have similar policies designed to look at my clarity and standards for this community management. Items to be considered include official processes for citizens, request a traffic study, developing criteria to justify the installation of traffic calming devices, and identify potential liability concerns and funding sources for the borough. So, chief, comment on that?
Basically, we get a lot of requests for a lot of different types of traffic calming devices. Speed bumps are very common right now. We had a recent request for related L E D stop signs in some areas of the community. I think what kind of gets lost sometimes is, I don't think people realize the amount of P E N dot regulations and the process that goes into this. We just can't slap a stop sign anywhere we want. We just can't draw the speed limit anywhere that we want. It requires an actual verified traffic study to occur. We have to follow the P E N dot regulations, and really the borough can only do this type of stuff on borough streets. We do have several state streets and county streets that run through the municipality that we cannot put arbitrarily, just put a traffic calming device or erect a new stop sign or change the speed limit. I mean, for example, the mid-block crosswalk that went on Wayman Road, that was a P E N button. That was at least a six to seven month process. We had to provide information to them. They had to do their own studies. They're the ones that approved it. The borough didn't do that. Brownsville Road with where the, the portable speed signs are that actually have the solar panels attached to, that's a county road. That was a one, that was almost a two-year process, involved the borough, the county engineering department. There was another entity that was involved, you know, this is, it's, it's not that we're not receptive, it's not that we don't want to help the residents out, we are just bound by red tape, and if we don't do it correctly, then the borough is liable if there's an accident or something happens on that roadway because it doesn't meet all these regulations. But that's, that's what we're looking to do. We're trying to be transparent, come up with an actual policy and procedures, incorporate the P E N dot regulations. So when somebody comes and asks us, can we do this? It's more than just yes or no. You know, we're going to, we should be able to give a packet of information that shows why we can and why we cannot do the action that's suggested.
Thank you, chief. So we got the feed on and everybody's okay with, uh, to make a motion for, they've been working with the solicitor.
Yes.
To first do a motion.
We're talking about the traffic calming.
Yeah.
There's no motion about that.
This one, council's permission to work with the solicitor. Everybody okay with that? Yeah, we'll bring that. Okay. And then lastly, the Civil Service Commission has certified the twenty twenty-three eligibility list for patrol officers candidates. The eligibility list is posted on the fourth floor outside the administration. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions on public safety? Okay, there's, there's no further information on the parks. We've given a report on what's happening in those. Delegate reports, Allegheny County Association. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, A C B A, A L O M. Now, Allegheny County Boroughs Association, which I'm a board member, and we had a quarterly meeting on June first, and the speaker was Kara McFadden from the Allegheny County Frontline Human Services, and she discussed a proposed landslide protection for homeowners and businesses in Allegheny County. It's a nonpartisan bill that was submitted by State Representative Valerie Gatos and Emily Kinkade, and land slides are not typically covered by most insurance policies. A landslide is caused by construction, grading, and drilling will not be covered, but let's contact our state representative, which is Nick Versitano, to vote yes, to push this through. And in two weeks from now, I'll come back with updates and hopefully a hospital number on that. So I'll move on to the P S A B, which is the Pennsylvania State Boroughs Association, and every year I do attend the annual conference, which is wonderful. They have a lot of great seminars and speakers, and I was going to be participating in a panel with the state treasurer, but due to a family illness, I was also going to be second vice president candidate, but I could not attend. So I had a forfeit by candidacy, and Randy Riddle of Rose City is the new second vice president. And that's all I have. That's not good. The Chamber of Commerce.
Uh, meeting was last Thursday. Uh, the big push right now is getting organized for the annual golf outing in September, that will be September the eighteenth. In fact, there's a golf community meeting tomorrow morning at the Whitehall House at eighty, um, doing. We welcome any, any, any participation. So it's a major fundraiser for the chamber for all, to support all the activities that go on in the community.
Is that the one, almost anyone?
No, that's a golf day.
Oh, that's a golf day, okay.
That's, that's another thing. What happens is, is the country club usually puts out, you know, golf outings on Monday, that's the day it closes. So, and they'll go through their schedule, once they're all booked, if they have any open Mondays, they'll let the chamber, through its organization, charge of the, it's just to play golf, there's no activities, no nothing, it's really a closed day. You go out there, I think it's twenty bucks or something like that to play eighteen holes of golf and utilize the facilities. So they turn that golf day. The golf outing, now speaking of, is sponsored and, uh, platinum sponsored by E P M C, they've sponsored it for a number of years, and, uh, over the twenty years that I've been involved, we brought back the chamber and the other organizations over four hundred thousand dollars. So it's paid well, it's a very nice outing, it's, so many of you have attended and seen, it's, it drives, good golf and great food, so, and the country club works with the C P O.
Thank you.
Are you going to handle it?
No.
Thank you.
See, my name has been taken off of that stuff, so. But I'm still there.
Great job.
Thank you. Going to work.
Anything else on?
Chamber, no?
Okay, Merco, yes.
Okay, Merco, we're, we're working on a lot of things to deal with our billing through the insurance companies and so forth. We're doing some analyses through our, uh, billing company, equipment claims, and that process is ongoing. We did have an item here consideration for the rescue team. There was an error in what they were billing for the capital assessments. There's two pieces of Merco's bill, and that's the operation expenses, if there's any shortfall there, and the other mostly is the capital expenditures to pay for the ambulances. And I think I mentioned here before, the last go around, we, we rotate the ambulances through, just like the police department does with their cars. We bought four ambulances a couple of years ago, at three hundred and forty thousand dollars a pop. Uh, we just put bids out for these, and it's the same with the ambulance, but now they're four hundred thousand dollars a pop. And when I started in this with Merco, they were eighty thousand dollars, and then if you bought the good ones, you could pre-chassis, you're spending a hundred and twenty-five. Well, uh, those days are gone. We thought that four hundred thousand dollars for each chamber. Well, it is fully equipped without staff, but there's some expensive equipment in there because the, uh, the racks are the, what do they call those? The dolly, the.
Stretcher?
Stretchers, thank you. Those things are sixty thousand dollars a pop. Just that one stretcher, so. But there was an authorization here, there was a shortfall in what was committed to the capital side of the assessment. Whitehall, it was about a hundred thousand dollars until, Whitehall's share was twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents, but the Merco's board has decided not to push for that money and absorb that shortfall and move forward to the next year. So I'm not making a motion and we don't need to pay that shortfall. That's all I have.
Thank you. Shaycock, Mr. B.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. What, what do you think we talked about, Shaycock? Garbage. All right, Doc. The issue was, as the current contract with SARS, December thirty-first, so to have a new program, uh, back to January first of twenty twenty-four, uh, the bids were to be open Monday.
They were up on Monday, I've not received a bid tabulation from them yet, um, probably to have that and analyze it before the next campaign.
They're, uh, they were anticipating three bids.
Correct, there were three, uh, companies that showed up to the end and were created.
Good, good. But what is definitely coming, well, not definitely coming, what likely is coming for us is with the automated recycling. So, uh, probably a cost saving for us, not that it's going to be an achievement currently, but, uh, you know, price is going to be up. We, we anticipate high prices, so we don't know that until this is, we're to choose.
So when they talk about the automated recycling, are they talking about like the smaller blue cans that I've seen around?
No, I, I, no, I thought so. I thought they were going to move more of the smaller cans and we'd like more rectified, like Americas.
There's one size over cycle.
Right. Which is the sixty-five gallon.
Right, right.
Yes, that's, that's. So it's smaller than ninety-five, shorter than thirty-five.
That's, that's coming in, and, uh.
Any change, any change on what they're going to recycle, like glass?
They're, they're saying it's more of a use for glass now than before. I mean, we've got more residents, they don't know what to do anymore.
Like a bracket, a bracket.
Last one minute, not. Apparently it's being, uh, they're finding a use for glass, and it's going to be probably back into recycling.
Correct, it was included in the bid, however, it's structured the way that it will be up to the municipality to decide your second part of the crime site or keeping it out.
It's going to be in all the cart, we all know that, right? Well, we can decide what we want, okay? And again, I know Phil doesn't like this, but consumption is going to be a big thing, how, how much trash you can put out, that's a big issue they're talking about. Well, one, they, they refer to the, our cans as carts, you know, so one cart, I know there's special times you can have multiple carts. Now, and again, we don't know what that price is going to be if you keep the pay action for that, so.
There is an option there for those items, there, there would be additional costs. Um, a lot of them are structured, the, the cost would be on the residents, you know, on municipalities, the industry prefers to keep that third party out of there. So, so again, once I receive the information, analyze our corporate habit, um, by the next campaign, certainly we all will be willing to run the numbers on that, because we feel a lot of change and a lot of options before.
Yeah, they're, they're going to get bids from, uh, police management, which we currently have, Republic, and, uh, County Hall.
County Halling, uh, Millwall, I don't know.
Are there support there?
No, 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 someone.
Mr. B.
No, we're not. County Halling is also doable, one of them bought the other out, if that makes sense. Similar ally is the same as Republic.
Okay.
No, it was not my, I, no, I don't, I'm not in favor of it, but unless we're saving a lot of money, but the next thing is, the only thing I was concerned by is, um, forgot what I was going to say, and my brain cell.
I'm sorry, sir.
To not, oh, the garbage or anything, excuse me. The things that, that we have to pay for that are outside of the garbage.
I think they're going to allow you one point, then you're not going to be able to be like a mattress and a.
Then they want to tell you, well, I, I'm under the impression that we have to pick up the garbage, we got to pick up what people put there as we did forever, forever, and all of a sudden they want to charge it. I think that's kind of illegal to me, and, and unwanted.
Mr. B, what you're referring to is called bulk pickup. So those are your larger items, a lot of times it's like a box, a box spring and a mattress. Currently residents completely goes out.
Weekly.
Yes, any week on the regular clutch, should they, you're limited to two. Um, that would now be, uh, once a month.
And we designate, yeah, we designate what, what, we, we want that from residents.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's wrong.
You're referring to the.
We're being controlled by, well, it's called. It's okay your way, but it's, it's, it's. I, hey, you got to get rid of the garbage, you never really can store it someplace, everybody doesn't have that capability, so they're going to be, what, sitting in the driveways or whatever, then we have to make another ordinance for that. I think you have to think real hard because.
Let's see what.
They're restricting, well, they're putting the commanders on the, the people for more money, that's, that just hurts to me, that's a, a criminal act itself.
I may make one comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, Jeff, Jeff Marsden, forty-seven seventy fresh. Um, with the new contractor, the new, new waste contractors, I know not everyone recycles, but, um, was there any plan to have new, uh, recycle bins distributed?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, because I know not everyone, I know that'd be cost effective.
It would be, it would be built into the cost.
Okay.
You wouldn't personally pay for it, well, you are to do the tax.
Right, it's actually a new one, what you received a couple of years ago.
It would be a similar hold off to how that the thing traction.
Right. Thank you.
And the other thing is, uh, we have a meeting Thursday, next Thursday, with, uh, this is for, the mayor, the chief, he may do something about that, to electric patrol cars and electric public. No, see, it was reported, wait.
Westlake.
It is Westlake. So that's what we, it is Westlake.
We have the three patrol cars and the three chargers.
Right.
Yeah, we've got a bunch of ground for it. Nice to see how that works. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about Chikla? Okay, we have some business on the agenda. The adoption of the amended full pass structure, which I think is in your packet, the pass application is.
So, yes, so the, the sheet, you see in your packet, this is the new form that staff will utilize, wanting pricing structure is determined by council. Um, the, the prices, if you see on this draft here, they just represent a fifty percent reduction in the passes.
I don't have any comments about the prices.
Right, and this.
I think I, I just have a question about some wording. Let's, let's settle the hard problems here.
Well, I'm just going to say, I mean, this is, these prices are a negative, you know, on the fact that we know it's going to be on July, what, sixth?
Well, construction is slated to, to complete July sixth, um, as far as the opening date Well, construction is slated to, to complete July sixth. Um, as far as the opening date, that is not been determined by council. Um, at this time, I don't recommend making a motion on that to this evening. We call the next meeting for a proper motion on the agenda for consideration.
Yes, please speak.
No, no, there isn't a motion on the agenda for the fees tonight. As far as the, uh, in opening date, there's not a formal motion on the agenda. You can put one on for the next meeting, um, the council can, so there's nothing to add a motion to the, to the.
But I'm saying here, if we have more delays or other problems and issues, should we be adjusting these prices again and why adopt the down to the minimum speed?
Yeah, I agree with you.
Why not?
So if you don't mind, let's just table that. Can we get more information of it in front of the opening date or opening times? We can adjust the fees accordingly.
Okay, so staff will put out a notice that, uh, currently full pass sales have been suspended as a normal, so they're not due to this meeting until a discussion could occur. So we'll put out another notice that that would be postponed until this one first.
Yeah, so we have a better idea of opening day, 'cause I don't wanna start jerking people away again and, uh, you know, because, uh, the opening day gets really packed.
Oh, no meeting.
Right. Let's hear it. Everybody agree with it?
Yes.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
I think so.
Is there any other new business to come to full pass? I just wanted to follow up on what Mayor Noak mentioned about Memorial Day, and it's always my honor to coordinate that. And I'm gonna thank Mayor Noak. This is such a wonderful job for us. And also Councilman Phil Lor, always participating. So lastly, of course, Dr. Joe Rishel from Whitehall. And, um, the music was by entertainer Mikey D. And I want to know that was paid for by our Whitehall Community Lions Club along with our representative, Nick Positano. So thank you to them. Just wanted to make sure I said that.
Jeff, I didn't get to, are you ready, good sir?
Yes.
I think it's just, I'll give before, uh, with your permission, I'd like to close the meeting in honor of something. Typically, we close meetings when we lose a prominent figure throughout the borough. Somebody that's been contributing to the borough for many, many years. In this case, it's not a death of an individual, but of a business. And it's the Cassidy Village Service that it, it, it gives. It, it is such a loss, uh, to the community. Where else are you gonna go to get somebody to pump your gas if you can't do it yourself? Where's the next closest place? I, I rack my brain. I can't think of any place.
There is, there's.
It doesn't. You know, and that, that's just one thing. You know, over all the years, you know, we should, you have tow trucks, you could tow people. We would go to people's houses, pick up their car, bring the car down, change the oil, change the brakes, take the car back. Uh, obviously, we've already discussed, we have the events first of the year. He's been a, you know, a fireman for, you know, I think they, since they invented fire. Obviously, at the, uh, you know, proximity to the fire station, he can walk and run down there when there was a fire. But I, I just don't think it can be overstated, um, what a contribution that business has been to the borough over the years and how sorely I think it's gonna be. So I'd like to close the meeting in, in honor of Ron Yosi and the Cassidy Village. I don't know what's the actual name of it. Or Cassidy Village. We all know what we're talking about. Thank you. I'll make the most of the meeting.
We're jerking this far.
Yes, we are going to stay for an executive session. So, in favor, say aye.
Aye.